Meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply, and the meeting will be run by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. For people utilizing Zoom, you will need to use the chat function to be recognized. Text your name and address. Your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized by the chairman, please unmute your microphone, and after speaking, we ask that you please mute your microphone. East Hemphill Township Public Comment Rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for meeting minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure previously discussed for Zoom attendance. Comment is limited to three minutes. It must be about an agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during public comment. All comments should be directed to the board. We will now move on to our first agenda item. Please join me. Rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And now the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So up first, we have a visitor.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Jamie Hall, and I'm the Director of Development at Lancaster Public Library. So thank you very much. I want to start off by, we can move to the next slide, Cindy. Reminding everyone of our mission at Lancaster Public Library, because we aren't a library of yesteryear. We do so much more than just provide a book borrowing service. So we usually start every board meeting and almost every meeting with revisiting this mission statement, and that is to inspire, empower, and strengthen our community by connecting people with information, ideas, and enriching experiences. By doing this, we remind ourselves of why we do what we do and how we provide for our community. Next slide, please. One of the misconceptions about a library is that they are something of yesteryear, and they're not used today. In fact, in 2019, a Gallup poll found that visiting a library was the number-one cultural activity in the United States. That's over going to see a concert, visiting a museum, or even going to the movies. So in 2019, our last typical year pre-pandemic, we saw over 350,000 visitors to Lancaster Public Library, a massive number. And just if you think that's just Lancaster city residents, another misconception, because you can see here that almost one in four East Hemphill residents has a current Lancaster Public Library card, which is very exciting. It means that your residents are using the library, and I'm also excited to say that East Hemphill has the second-highest number of checkouts out of the 14 municipalities we serve. So not only do one in four of your residents have a card, they are avid borrowers and readers. That's a very exciting thing that you guys should be proud of. And according to the American Library Association, there's 105,000 materials borrowed by East Hemphill last year were worth $2 million. It was a little bit over $2 million, not including the free services and programming that we also provide. Next slide, please. So Lancaster Public Library is the largest of the 14 public libraries in Lancaster County. We have the largest collection, and we serve over 40% of the county. So even if one of your residents ends up at another public library in Lancaster County, it's most likely that they will end up borrowing a material from Lancaster Public Library through interlibrary loans at some time or another. Our 21% of our budget that is spent on our resources is currently being used on e-resources. So even though your residents may not be visiting our branch in either Mountville or downtown Lancaster, they may be visiting us online. So as I said, we do offer the most materials in the county, which is very costly, even though libraries are free for everyone else, they're not free for us. And the move to e-resources does come with a cost as well. We roughly spend $200,000 annually to add to our collection and to make sure that we provide a robust and current collection for our patrons. One of the other differentiators of Lancaster Public Library is that we have the most MLS holding librarians in the county. That is a Masters of Library Science. That's important, because we are in the information age. We all have Google at our fingertips, and with that, we need a navigator. We use a quote by author Neil Gaiman often, "Google can bring you back 100,000 answers; a librarian can bring you back the right one." And we see that each year with our rising number of reference questions. Last year, we answered over 2,000 reference questions, and I believe that we just surpassed that number in 2021, or 2022, I'm sorry. Next slide, please. I want to highlight some things that we do, because people think of, when they think of a library, they do think of books, and that is just a small portion of what we do at Lancaster Public Library. So at our downtown branch, we have our Duke Street Business Center. This is a place that young budding entrepreneurs can come and use our databases to start a business. It's also where people can come and meet with a reference librarian if they would like to update their CV or write a cover letter. It's a place that will continue at our next location as well. We have our Autism Resource Center. We were the first library in Pennsylvania to have one. We're one of only a few libraries across the country that has these materials for free. We have our Lancaster Collection. That's our local collection. It has a lot of history on local landmarks and families. As I said, our e-resources, which are ever-popular, so even if you are an avid Kindle reader, you can still access our books. You can rent them for a few weeks at a time and still enjoy our services. Probably the most popular part of Lancaster Public Library is our programming now. So we have a programming for birth all the way until end of life, and we really pride ourselves in the variety of programming as well, often partnering with other nonprofit organizations to provide that variety. And lastly, is kind of our catch-all category, and it's just things that are very entertaining, including American Girl Dolls, museum passes, ukuleles, we have a harp, baking pans. So there's a large variety of offerings at the library. Next slide, please. One of the things that also differentiates our library on a national scale is that we are responsible for fundraising the majority of our budget. Currently, we fundraise over 63% of our budget, very unlike libraries across our country. To put this into perspective, next slide, please. If you look at this chart here, it shows that the national average for local funding per capita is nearly $38, where if you see that little teal sliver to the right of it, Lancaster Public Library is currently receiving $1.49 in local public funding per capita. If you look across the other categories, you'll see that the differences aren't as drastic. However, you will see that other sources, that is that fundraising that Lancaster Public Library fundraises more than almost the national average of those across the country. Next slide, please. And to compare that, at a state level, out of the 450 public libraries in Pennsylvania, Lancaster Public Library is towards the tippy-top with fundraising, and then eighth for largest service area and materials. However, if you look at the bottom of this slide, we rank 429th for number of staff per capita, which is heavily dependent on our budget, and 439th in local funding per capita. Next slide, please. Before I move forward, I want to point out that the reason I am here today is to thank you for your continued support of our library. Pennsylvania and our system is unique. Pennsylvania does not have a mandate for municipalities donating to your public library, so it's very much appreciated. I'm also here to say that we provide these services. We make an impact. As I said, 105,000 materials were checked out by your residents last year, and I want you to consider to continue to support us and what that support looks like moving forward. I know that it's budget time, and I'm sure that you are receiving a lot of asks from community members, and I respect that, and I'm sure I'm going to give you a line that you've heard from everyone. This year is very expensive. We have seen costs increase between 9 and 10%. That includes wage increases to retain staff and to make sure that we're adding talent to the team that is up to our standards to provide for your residents. So I ask that when you're sitting around this year, and the many hours of budget discussions, that you think of Lancaster Public Library, you think of that 9 to 10% increase. See if you can work that into your budget for the next year and to continue to support us. And I will end with saying that you may have seen Lancaster Public Library in the news recently, and that is because we're moving, and our next chapter is that we are moving to Yule Plaza. So our Mountville location will remain the same, but our downtown location will be moving from North Duke Street to North Queen Street. Although it's only a block away, we really feel we're moving into the heart of the city, where we're going to be able to be accessible to more and more Lancaster residents and beyond. We're very excited about the move. This move is a $10 million project, and I point that out because municipality money is not being used for this project. This project is entirely fundraised through grants and foundations and fundraising that is capital campaign-specific. And I just want to highlight that we are well on our way, and we're very excited that hopefully by this time next year, you guys have all visited our new library after a ribbon cutting this coming spring. And I'm very excited to see you all there. And I would love to answer any questions. I'm also here with our board president, Aaron Sherman, and I know that he can offer just a few words on why he supports the library and answer any questions as well.
I'll be brief. So my name is Aaron Sherman. I'm the board chair of the Lancaster Public Library. Obviously, Jamie's here with all the information. I'm just really here to support what we're working on. I know that, obviously, in your position, you have a limited amount of money and a whole lot of priorities that you really want to fund. So I mean, I'm a finance guy, and I like to look at everything as an investment, and I think that an investment in the library is a very productive investment. Jamie and the rest of the staff at the library do a phenomenal amount of work with a very limited budget, and really, what the Lancaster Public Library is able to accomplish for all of the residents that we serve is really just limited by our budget. So I'm a very strong believer that every dollar of funding that we get pays a lot of dividends for, you know, residents of Lancaster, of East Hemphill, and of all the different municipalities we serve. So your consideration is really appreciated.
Thank you. So, board members, start with Mr. LaFever. Do you have anything?
Well, on a note of a bit of admitted humor, where are we going to park to go to the Yule Plaza?
Funny you should ask.
You're not the first person to ask, I promise. So we are going to be in the first two floors of the new Christian Street parking garage. So we will have floors of parking above the library. Don't worry, we also have a lot of acoustic material, so you will not know that when you're in the library. But the elevators from that parking garage will go directly into the library, so you can visit the library without ever feeling a drop of rain.
Sounds even better than now.
It's a huge improvement over what we have in many ways.
I will also point out that Lancaster Parking Authority is housing us on those first two floors for 99 years rent-free, so we're very excited about the move.
What is your annual budget approximately?
About $1.65 million, and that includes some certain district funding. And that is, you know, as Jamie said, the bulk of that is generated by the library itself. Very little comes from public funding.
Really? So you don't get big blocks of support from the municipalities, or the state, or federal?
We do have, so about one-third of what comes to us is public funding. So we do have, you know, probably the biggest single chunk is state funding.
Okay.
But again, that's 20% of our budget, maybe? And then municipalities do put in money as well, but that is on a strictly voluntary basis. There's no requirement whatsoever to do so, and that's kind of where that stark divide comes in terms of how a typical library is funded, which you can look across the country. You know, typical library is either an actual arm of the government, right? It's a department of the local government, or it is funded almost 100% by the local government. So we really, we basically get about a third of what we need from local government funds.
I suppose it is, the use of libraries has changed over the last eight or 10 years, right? Could you give us some idea of maybe something new that you're doing at the library that maybe isn't being done somewhere else?
Sure, absolutely. So one of the things that differentiates the library from everyone else, and this isn't new, but I think it's worth noting, is that it is entirely free. So we are providing meeting spaces. We are providing study rooms. We are providing all of our materials entirely for free. Also, with our programming, we do such a large variety that we also work with community partners. So even if somebody is doing it in the community, we may be connecting our patrons with them in a community hub in a free manner. So, for example, we do everything from social justice book clubs with the YWCA to partnering with Penn State Health to have them come in and give free screenings at the library to our patrons.
And one other item I'll add that I really enjoyed that the library did recently was through the pandemic, obviously, that, you know, threw everything up in the air, and so as much as possible, the staff was really trying to keep serving the public, and so the librarian started something called grab-bag services, where basically, either based on your checkout history, or you can tell a librarian, you know, "I like graphic novels and historical fiction," they will just put together a bag of books that you could pick up. So it was a really neat way to engage the community throughout that time. And one other item that I'll add is, you know, when you think about the libraries, it's, you know, as Jamie said, you know, they're not ancient institutions, and what we found in recent statistics is that if you look at all of our users of the library, about 55% of them come from Gen Z and millennials. So majority of library users are basically 38, 39, and under. So it is definitely an organization that is used by the full-age spectrum and really is poised to grow in the future.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Russell?
Nothing. I've heard this presentation for about 12 years now. I appreciate everything you do.
Keeps getting better, right?
I just wanted to say, I appreciate what you do. I used to work in Lancaster, and I was probably in there about once a week, getting books on CD. I must have gotten hundreds of them for our son, and books, bedtime books, so I really appreciated that being available. And I guess the only question I have is, you mentioned, so you've got Lancaster, you mentioned Mountville. So are you affiliated with any of the other ones, like New Holland, Efforta, Mannheim Township? Or how does, I don't understand how it's all set up.
Took me about three years as a board member to really get a clear idea of the system, so.
Sure. So there are 14 public libraries in Lancaster County. We're all part of the library system of Lancaster County. That is really the back end. So we all operate as our own 501(c)(3)'s. We all have our own boards, our own budgets. We're all responsible for those things. The system provides things like IT help, and it also allows for us to share books amongst the libraries in between. But Lancaster Public Library only has the downtown library branch and the Mountville branch, but we do work together in that we will loan each other books, just separate funding, separate boards.
And we don't have a separate, we don't have our own East Hemphill Township library, I know that much, so.
Yeah, so, and that's the, system has broken down the county into service areas. So Lancaster Public Library's service area is roughly 40% of the county. That being said, it may be that some of your residents may use Efforta Public Library as an example. Even though they're doing that, as I said earlier, they probably will end up borrowing material of ours, because we have the largest collection. But even if that's not the case, as it's broken down, system, service area-wise, we are not going to Efforta to ask for money or funding, because some of their patrons will inevitably use our library. It's just separated that way to make sure that we are providing for those in the service area and that our funding is coming from that service area.
Thank you.
Very confusing system.
So did I understand that correct? It's Lancaster County and Mountville? That's the only one that's?
Yep. Downtown Duke Street, soon-to-be Queen Street branch, and Mountville are Lancaster Public Library.
Okay.
And that Lancaster Public Library has 40% of the county, which includes East Hemphill.
Okay.
And that is sort of a unique challenge that Lancaster Public Library faces, that some of the smaller libraries across the county don't. You know, they might, there might be a small library in a small community, and it's very easy to reach those residents, right? Because geographically, they're just so close. You know, as Jamie said, we have 40% of Lancaster residents. You know, Hemphill, for example, is in our service area, even though it's quite some distance to one branch or another. So that does create, you know, a lot of need to be able to serve residents well.
I know that East Hemphill would use our Mountville branch quite a bit.
Any comments or questions from the residents?
Hi, Patricia Clark, and I'm at 3337 Cochran Drive. I was not aware that the Hemphill, East Hemphill Township, supported the library system, so I'm very happy to hear that as a resident. And I'm one of the 25% of the people in the township that does. I have a library card, and what I like about it is, I also didn't understand the funding, the funding source being separate, because as a resident, for me, it's kind of seamless. I see it as being able to go to any of the libraries around in the Lancaster system. I oftentimes go over to Mannheim Township Public Library. I've been over to Columbia, and I go downtown sometimes. And as a resident, I can go to any of those libraries and use my library card to borrow books, so it's wonderful, free, great programs for the kids. And I've also used the services for like passport services. They have other services there as well, so I'm glad that the township supports it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
From my, excuse me, from my experience, one of the best things you do for Lancaster County is the annual book sale. I've been there. The attendance speaks for itself, and I stood in line with people from Berks County, and I'm sure they come quite a bit in it.
Yeah, there are book dealers that come from New York to stock up, because it's such a great source of new books. And that's actually, that book sale is run by our Friends group, the Friends of Lancaster Public Library.
True.
And they, I mean, they spend all year preparing for that. And then they have another one from Mallory School.
Yeah. I was gonna say, if you're a big fan, we have the Fall Resort, which is actually this coming weekend, and so that's down in our warehouse that's right near the Horse Inn downtown. It's on Marshall Street, and that's just a mini version of it, but our big book sale is slated for May of this coming year. So we love that the Friends put it on and volunteer that many hours.
Thank you. Mrs. Schweitzer, anybody from Zoom?
No.
But we do have our budget meeting this month coming up, so staff will be getting back to you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your time today.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, up next, we have the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda is routine items that require very little debate or discussion. Are there any comments from the board on the Consent Agenda?
None.
Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. We do not have any action items this evening. Up next, old business, the Steiman Blue Green Quarter Quarterly Report.
You just have the report that they submit on a quarterly basis. They do review their activities. They did point out that they have a website now that they have just created. It's lccbgc.org. That's up and running. They're still working on some grants and awaiting notification of those. They're working on stormwater plans. They're working on a second intermunicipal agreement. I did want to publicly state their current grant-funded committed grant funding is $5,659. They have private, another source of money on hand of just over $2 million, and that totals $7,744,000. I think the project had started at $15 million. It's probably, I think, the last number I saw was more in the range of 18. So the prices are going up, but they are gaining ground in terms of their funding sources.
Any comments or discussion from the board?
Something I have looked for in these reports, and I have not seen, is a proration or some schedule of how the cost and/or contributions or anticipated funding between the municipalities would be developed. And as I see grants being gained for some of the initial steps, I'm concerned that the subsequent sections of the trail might be it more difficult to get grants or something. I would hope someone has labored with this question and prepared. I just look for it in the reports, and I haven't found it.
The first intermunicipal agreement dealt with the $75,000 contribution from three of us, and then the in-kind from Lancaster Township. That got signed, sealed, and payments made. The second intermunicipal agreement deals with the MS4 credits and long-term maintenance of the trail system. That's taking a little bit longer to get the four municipalities on the same page, as well as the foundation. So once that's completed, then they'll start looking at the financing end of what you're discussing. So it really hasn't been addressed yet.
No. Okay. Thank you.
And I would echo Mrs. Schweitzer, what Mr. LaFever's getting at. I think we've been upfront with them in the beginning as far as funding and, you know, not being on the hook for millions of dollars coming from the township. And I think they understood that, but.
Yes. And they're getting that from the other three as well.
Right.
Yeah.
So as long as that message is being delivered to them, clearly, they know what they're doing, and it's going to be up to them to pull this project off.
Yeah, some of that funding source, too, will be the purchase of those MS4 credits. And that's a huge debate right now, too, and what they're worth, which is part of that whole second agreement.
It would be nice for them to, the last page is where they kind of go over the grants. It'd be nice to just have a little bit more detail on that one. What they, when they say they got $9.4 million of pending applications, what does that exactly mean at this point? It's, it looks like they've secured $7 million in funding already.
Right.
Which is good. I mean, they're definitely making a lot of good progress with their, with their seeking funding. It'd just be nice to follow what Mr. LaFever said, just have a little bit more detail.
Okay. Will do.
Okay, any new business? Okay. Hearing none, managers' report.
So like the agenda that my managers reported, and not that long. I will tell you that the Centerville Road project, I just looked at the numbers tonight, that was bid, it was bid at $36,292 million. Of that total, we have now been told that $18,105 is the township's responsibility. We had projected that to be 19. We had projected that to be nineteen point three, so we're under that. And our twenty percent contribution, we projected at three point eight, is coming in at three point four. So we're a little bit under what we had projected probably this spring in terms of numbers.
That's good numbers. That's, that's unusual right now for construction.
Yeah, well, they probably made it extra high. The Church Street water line replacement, we did get a confirmation from the developer or the contractor, Dolly, that that's going to start the seventeenth. So Diane's on top of that with the residents and also the school district.
So that's, that's going to be just, because you told me, but the rest of the board, it's going to be six weeks?
Six weeks.
At least minimum.
Right.
Six weeks is what they're saying right now.
Right.
No problems.
Right. Residents will continue to have access to their properties. They do have steel plates, so those will be, areas will be covered in case of emergencies. But there will be road closures. I think the signs went up Monday.
Did we have a message to send to the school districts to kind of correct the messages that were going out?
Diane took care of that, yes.
Okay. Good.
So.
The Old Royce Town Road project's moving along Farmingdale Road. The pickleball court, the nets and posts were ordered. It's a six to eight week lead time, so you're probably not going to see pickleball out there until next year, till we get the color coding on and get that set up. The Hemphill Water Authority is still dealing with the Siskiyou River Basin in terms of their withdrawal limits. It's been an ongoing project for the last twelve years, and they are fairly far apart in their limit numbers, so we'll have to, yet to see where that ends up. Group reports, the Traffic Engineer Recommendation Group met on the twenty-third. We did receive three firms that submitted statements of interest, and the committee is working through that process, and interviews are scheduled for October tenth. I did attend, along with Mr. Weaver, the Penn State Dedication, and Diane was there as well. Their doors opened on Monday. The Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO, had a discussion about Centerville Road. They had to move some funds around to keep that funding source active. I think they took money from two twenty-two because that's on a different path. Twenty twenty-three budget meetings are being handled by staff and department heads in anticipation for your October twenty-fifth budget meeting, which is at four thirty that evening. That's the end of my report unless there's questions.
For Farmingdale Road, have we maxed out the grants at this point? They have a matching amount, so we, we have, so have we hit the point where we maxed out the grants with our shared, our split?
We will, yes.
Okay.
And then what's left over is the high money.
No, by me, have we, have we gotten, there's, we have what the project costs are, and we have the grants, and then we have our match. Have we gotten to the point where we have maxed out the grants? We're not leaving any grant money on the table at this point, are we?
We won't, no.
Okay.
I, I think I know what you're asking, yes, and no, we won't.
Okay.
With the matches.
Okay, so right now, we're, we've, we've gotten, we've optimized what we're getting from the grants at this point.
Yes. Yeah, great, grants get spent first, and that matching funds, yeah.
Because if we're going to leave any on the table, then this would be the time to do a change order for the contractor or something like that, too.
Correct, yes. Yeah.
I had a question. It's probably not for you, township manager, but maybe for the water authority. But are we getting to a point where, I know we don't have a lot of land, but we have a pretty good amount of land left to develop. Are we at a point where that's going to start to be a choke point, I wonder? And maybe that's something to think about. And the other is if we're limited to two million gallons per day now, and we seem to be doing okay on that amount, how much more do we need? I mean, I understand the water authority wants to have the rate as high as they can get it, but what do we actually need would be another question.
According to the superintendent, he can get by with between two point four and two point five. And still have some area for growth.
And right now, the city of Lancaster is making up the difference.
They provide us four hundred thousand if we need it, yes.
Which is more expensive, too.
Yes.
More for a resident and business perspective.
Yes.
So it's not a choke point, but it, that's because of the city of Lancaster, then.
Let me refresh my memory. What was it reduced from?
Six point two?
You have six point one in your report?
Six point one, six point one.
And we feel like that was an arbitrary number, correct?
Yes. Well, the reduction to one point nine three seven was an arbitrary reduction that they have been fighting for the past six, twelve years. It is coming, it seems to be coming to a head. The SRBC is meeting in December, so they have a docket agenda coming up in November that the Hemphill Water Authority will be attending and attempting to plead their case directly to the commissioners. That would be the first time that they've been able to do that. We have not been able, they have not been able to sway the representatives that come down, staff. I'm not sure if they'll have any luck with the commissioners.
We have a lot of wet basements in Mill Creek and Indian Springs because they're not pumping as much water now.
And he has told them them numerous times that is the case, and they will not believe it.
There's no problem with water. That's why it's called Indian Springs.
So are they going to plead their case? I mean, are they going to have legal representation, or do you know how that's being done?
Thus far, they have stopped short of engaging, well, I mean, Jason Hess does attend the meetings, the attorney, but they haven't engaged him to defend them. It's been handled by Jim Ashelman.
I'm, I'm just wondering if perhaps a a seasoned presenter, not necessarily that it has to be an adversarial legal representation, but.
Jim does a very good job. He knows the details. He knows the ins and outs. He's an engineer.
Right. But there could be something said to have like a Mike Brubaker, who used to chair the commission, also kind of helping out, and that's something he does for a living now. Just suggesting, kind of, someone who knows all the commission members very well and can engage them. Not saying that Jim's not very engaging, and he's very technically competent and knows what he's doing, but this is a whole different level when you're going to a commission like this that represents multiple states.
It might be too short of notice, but I'll definitely reach out to Jim and let him know that because the.
Yeah, because I'm just thinking, and that just came off the top of my head, because Scott brought it up. And Mike Brubaker used to chair that commission. He's right here.
Not necessarily, and nothing, again, nothing negative about Jim doing it, but if you only get one shot.
And that's what, yeah, it is.
And Mike, Mike does consulting and public relations. That's what he does now. So this might be a suggestion for our authority, just maybe up the ante a little bit.
Yep.
They've invested so much at this point, now is not the time to to go cheap. Now's the time to swing for the fence.
And Representative Miller's been attending those meetings as well.
And I would say anything that we can do as well to help.
Yeah, I was thinking that myself.
Yeah.
I know you're frustrated because I was on a wellhead protection committee that meets now once a year, but I've heard in the past, there are frustration with the whole process. So if we could help them out, that would be great. I mean, I understand what SRBC is trying to do, but to be that far apart is just excessive, I think.
Also, the reduction after seven years makes no sense.
And we did do pump testing, too, to kind of justify our numbers, and they just refused to accept them.
They did pump testing, and they could get five point something. They would settle for four point three. But SRBC is stuck at one point nine, or now two. They did up it a little bit.
Yeah, okay. All right. Anything else regarding the manager's report from the board? Okay, public comment? Any public comment? Any one on Zoom that wanted to comment?
No.
Okay. Well, hearing none, we will adjourn the meeting at seven forty PM. Thank you.
Yay.
Right. I think we were.